Good evening, everybody. Today is February 25th and the Board of -- a special Board of Commissioners meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthert?
Present.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Mayor Black?
Present. First item on the agenda is public comment. This is for anything that is not on the agenda. You have a chance to speak on each item later in the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. Please be kind, respectful, and civil. And remember to give your full name and address and speak directly into the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's working. My name is Chuck Lambert. I live at 565 Crystal Drive, Madera Beach. I've been a resident there for about seven years. I have a few thank yous that I feel a need to get out there. First, I'd like to thank all of our Commissioners here, our mayor, our city manager, and everyone else up here, as well as our support staff. People like Lacy, I've seen her around here before. She might have left, but those people are very important to us as well. And the important work that they do on a daily basis, as well as everyone up here. As we strive to bring stability back to Madera Beach, I want to thank all for making our municipal government once again transparent and accountable. I really feel that's necessary and we're doing a good job of it. It's not been easy. The success of any government's about its people. I think we have the right people here tonight to make the right decisions. Second, I'd like to take a moment to thank John Douthert, Commissioner Douthert, for his help in getting Crystal Island residents' concerns heard at not only this meeting, but several other meetings we've had. And thank you for that time spent, John. Third, I'm on behalf here of many of the Crystal Island residents. I'd like to thank all the Crystal Island residents here tonight for taking time out of their busy, important schedules. And we had a good turnout at our last meeting as well. Could I ask all the Crystal Island residents to please stand? Anybody living on Crystal Island. Again, thank you for coming tonight. It'll be an important, productive meeting. And there's Lacy back there, by the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Loggett. Excuse me, I'm at 13231 Golf Lane. Prior, I have expressed concerns and had several meetings with the city regarding the repaving of Golf Lane and asked for specifics as to what is going to be done. Previous repaving of Golf Lane has built up the center of the road above my driveway and therefore caused flooding to my property. At all these meetings that I've had, everyone was in agreement that the repaving was done improperly and needed to be corrected. On January 25, 2018, I had a meeting with Linda Portal, Eric Al Carrier, Marcy Forbes, and Dave Marsicano. And we discussed several things regarding Barefoot Beach Project, one of which was the issue of repaving Golf Lane. One of the proposals being discussed was that Barefoot Beach is going to repave Golf Lane with pavers, but to date, I have not seen any specifics. On September 27, 2018, I had a meeting with Jonathan Evans, Linda Portal, and Al Carrier, in which we again discussed the repaving of Golf Lane. They inspected Golf Lane and agreed that prior repaving of the lane had raised the middle of the road and above my driveway, and that had to be addressed prior to any resurfacing or repaving. No specifics were stated received. On February 11, 2019, I sent an email to Mr. Evans outlining several issues that we discussed during the meeting in September regarding the resurfacing of Golf Lane. The email was generated based on the discussion I had with Guy Gannaway, the general contractor on Barefoot Beach Project, who stated he was almost ready to start resurfacing Golf Lane. Mr. Gannaway had no specifics, so I generated the email to Mr. Evans and followed some of the questions and concerns that I included in my email. When is it scheduled and how long would it take? The issue being parking for the neighbors and renters. What is being proposed, pavers or asphalt? Is it all Golf Lane or just from 132nd and 133rd? Since prior resurfacing raised the center of Golf Lane above my driveway, will the new surface be below my driveway? Or how will that affect the rest of Golf Lane? What are the requirements for resurfacing and who sets them, FDOT or the City of Madera? What is going to be the impact on surrounding properties? What is going to be done to eliminate the collection of water into my driveway and the possibility of flooding on my property? I read the memo Ms. Portal issued on February 5 with requirements to the developer of the Schooner Resort and has met with regards to 145th and 146th Avenue. It is Item 20 of that memo which states overall specifications and FDOT approval. Do these specifications such as this apply to Golf Lane? I read the announcement issued by the city on February 21st with regards to the 137th Avenue Circle Roadway Improvement Project. Was any type of announcement going to be issued for the work on Golf Lane? The latest is tonight's meeting regarding Crystal Drive. I don't know how many of you have inspected Golf Lane recently, but if you have, I would have hoped some positive actions would have been initiated. It is a mess down there and something needs to be done. Thank you.
Please, Hodges.
Hi, Ginger Tolliver, Bay Point Drive, Madera Beach. I just found out about the meeting, so I don't know if I'm out of order or whatever, but I heard we were -- they were discussing road improvements or something of that nature tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as I said, I live on Bay Point Drive. Those of you who know the city, it's like a T. And there's several times, well, I wouldn't say that, quite a few times during the year, I can't get out of my street unless I go through saltwater. And then I have to go spend a lot of money to get the car washed out, the engine and everything else. A very easy fix, if you look at the letter T, the little part that goes out, would be very easily fixed with this little hump in it. It's that part. The houses don't flood, nothing else, just the going in and going out. So I would love someone to go look at that. We've talked about it for years. If you're talking about, we don't have million-dollar houses on my street, but none of them are dumps either. And we pay our taxes like everyone else. I certainly hope you could give us a chance and look at it. It seems to be a very easy, not very expensive fix. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. The first item on the agenda is roadway project funding and authorization requests. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of Commissioners, this item is to seek authorization to proceed forward with roadway project funding and ancillary projects. On February 3, 2013, or February 13, 2019, city staff conducted a meeting with members, representatives from the Crystal Island neighborhood. They brought concerns with respect to major roadway issues on Crystal Drive, Flamingo Drive, Lilian Drive, and Johns Pass avenues. The issues stem from localized flooding, significant cracking resulting in potholes, and components associated with aging infrastructure. I've had an opportunity to meet with the engineer of record for the City of Madera Beach, Mr. Al Carrier with Duel and Associates, and we talked about project options. One of the things that we came up with to be able to remedy the issues on a long-term basis would require the City of Madera Beach to consider a municipal bond issuance or a bank note to the tune of $7.5 million. We had additional conversations about some immediate things that we can do from the city's perspective to address the concerns articulated by the residents, which would require milling and resurfacing of Crystal Drive and Flamingo Drive. The anticipated cost for that would be $225,000. With the city's strong credit rating of A, or 2A, we believe that we can get a favorable rate and proceed forward with either funding mechanism that is available to us. Also, we believe that we can get some additional monies from the Florida, or South Florida Water Management District, or SWIFTMUD, that the city has been successful in receiving grant funding for Rex Place, Boca Seega Avenue, Boca Seega Drive, and 137th Avenue Circle. Also associated with this project, we've looked at some of our other roadway infrastructure, and we have found that Parsley and Marguerite Drive are experiencing severe deterioration. So we come to you today to request immediate actions, which requires us to proceed forward with $225,000 to move forward with the project of milling and resurfacing Crystal Drive and Flamingo Drive as a stopgap measure. We anticipate a 30-day competitive solicitation project, 30 days for design and engineering, and another 25 days to complete the project, with an anticipated completion date of mid-May to early June. If we look at the large-scale project to redo the roadways that staff is proposing on Crystal Island, the project is anticipated to cost $7.5 million, but then if you add the additional roadways of Marguerite and Parsley, you're looking at a total bond issuance or bank note of $12.5 million. That process will most likely take six to eight months for the city to proceed forward with providing the necessary information for the Board of Commissioners to consider, as well as design, engineering, and then working with our financial advisor to bring back to you funding mechanisms as how we can go ahead and proceed forward with paying down the debt. If we are to move forward with this project concurrently, staff will look at working with Pinellas County Utilities to make sure the water and wastewater infrastructure is replaced as part of the overall reconstruction of the roadways on Crystal Island. Of course, they are our primary utility provider, so that would be costs that they would incur. As we as staff have looked at some of the other infrastructure concerns in our community, we've also identified deficiencies on Pelican Lane, 129th East, and 131st Avenue East. These roadways are poorly rated when the city conducted its pavement management study. So staff is looking at this from a multifaceted approach. We're looking at authorization from the board to proceed forward with the project as a stopgap measure to address Crystal Drive and Flamingo Drive. Staff will then ask the board for authorization to proceed forward to engage our financial advisor and then see what funding mechanisms are available to us for all the capital projects that we have outlined as far as our roadway infrastructure, and bring back that necessary information. Also, we would go before the Water Management District and put in an application to receive some additional monies from the Water Management District. We anticipate that we can probably get a 50% match on the contributions that the city would make to fund that infrastructure. The project on Crystal Island would be that we would install the pervious pavement. That is a benefit to the organization because it allows for us to address some of the stormwater and allows for the roadway to effectively address some of the roadway flooding issues that we have as the water percolates through the pavement and then goes into the aquifer. We are also going to seek any state or federal funds that are available to us to be able to move forward with this project in its entirety. But I just wanted to clarify for the board, all this will end up coming back before you. Also, it is all built into the schedule that we will have conversations with the Budget Review Committee, but the immediate concern that we have and that we would like to address is the authorization for us to proceed forward with a competitive solicitation to the tune of approximately $225,000 to mill and resurface Crystal Drive and Flamingo Drive, and then authorization for the Finance Director and myself to move forward with obtaining the appropriate paperwork for a bond issuance or bank note and bring options before you, and then itemize and line and put out the types of the funding that's going to be required to address all the roadway projects here that we have listed. In the event that the city moves forward in its entirety in addressing the items that are articulated here, it's anticipated to be the largest capital investment that the city has made in its roadway infrastructure since the inception of the city. If we're able to move forward with the schedule as proposed, we're looking that we will be under construction with the rebuild of the Crystal Island infrastructure by October, or June of 2021 to October of 2022. Based on the condition of the roadways and the conversations that I've had with the engineer, we believe that postponing this project will only lead to continued roadway deterioration and continued issues. And it's at a point where we cannot continue to patch the roadway because it is failing on multiple levels. So myself and Mr. Carrier are here, and the Finance Director is here to answer any questions. And gentlemen, if I left out anything in the presentation, please feel free to interject.
I think you covered everything.
Al, I had some questions.
Certainly.
If I can, okay. There's been a lot of misconception about the work that's going to be done over there. I've talked to a lot of neighbors. Last 10 days or so, I've been up and down the streets talking to different people. And they're very confused exactly as to what is being done. They were telling me we're getting underground utilities, we're getting sidewalks, and they're concerned when I said, no, I don't think it's going in that direction. Could you just verify for me exactly what is the work that you're going to be doing like right now?
So the first step, again, is to go ahead and mill and resurface Crystal. It's at a point where it's starting to have catastrophic failure. If we get in there and re-mill that now, we can get another four or five years out of it. But the whole intent of that is to get three years to bridge us to when we get to Crystal. We'll start with Lilian and Johns Pass and move back and do Lilian or Crystal Island last, because it's the most heavily traveled. But as a stopgap measure, we want to be able to have a safe road for people to travel on, so we want to mill and resurface that now. In our scope of work, we are not contemplating undergrounding any utilities. All the work would be to rebuild the curbs in the infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, and then enter into a joint project agreement with Pinellas County so that they'll fund the distribution of the water and they'll fund the fixing of the sanitary sewer with that joint agreement through Pinellas County. The key is getting on their docket soon so that they can start their budget process also. So it looks like 20, was it 2021 of June is, you know, pretty far out there, but it's really not. The amount of work that has to go into getting these projects cooperatively funded and in agreements with Pinellas County, it's really a short process.
Okay. Can you verify for me also, you say you're going to be re-milling Crystal Drive and Flamingo. Are you going all the way down, let's say from, when you come across the bridge on Island Drive, are you going to go all the way into the cul-de-sac with the re-milling? Or are you going to start the re-milling right there on the corner?
I would start it right there on the corner.
So you will not cover the cul-de-sac?
Correct. That road, don't get me wrong, it's not in great shape, but that part of the road doesn't take the brunt of the traffic. And I think that part of the road can hold out, so there's no need, in my opinion, to spend the extra money on doing all the way down the cul-de-sac.
Okay, and the same thing on the other end of Crystal. You're just going to go down to Flamingo?
Correct.
You're not going to go further down Crystal?
Correct.
So those roads will not be done at this time?
Correct.
Okay, and going across Flamingo, how far are you going to go? You're going to go all the way to Johns Pass?
Yes.
So Flamingo from Crystal to Flamingo, all the way to Johns Pass?
All the way to Johns Pass, yes.
Okay, and that is just the re-milling?
Milling and resurfacing, correct.
Resurfacing, okay.
I might add, there was a couple of comments when we had the neighborhood meeting about undergrounding utilities. That's something we can look into. I looked into it for doing numbers of roads about four or five years ago for Madera Beach, and we just completed another estimate for Bel Air Beach. So I have some pretty good numbers. I have some contacts with people. And I can get you a general number cost per household if you just want to move forward with that.
Right, because I know when Normandy was done, or the first, that was the first road down was Normandy. They wanted underground utilities, and come to find out, it was very expensive. It was going to cost each homeowner there a certain amount to have the underground utilities, and so that was kind of put back. But it is very expensive.
Yes. The last estimate I did for Bel Air Beach, similar community, it was between $10,000 and $12,000 a house.
Okay. Now, with this re-milling, I'm sorry to be taking up so much time.
I know.
Okay, but I just had a lot of questions from people. With the re-milling that we're doing, what is the life expectancy on that road? Is it going to be a year, two years, three years, just with the re-milling?
Most likely between five and eight years, but the condition, on a normal cycle of milling and resurfacing, five to eight years, sometimes you get 10 years out of it. My opinion, the condition of that road and the amount of traffic it gets, maybe you might be able to stretch five years out of it. We're looking to get three, three and a half out of it.
Okay. Can I move on to Walt? Question for him. Walt, what I have done here is I went through the budget books that we've had and come across the fiscal year 2017 where we had Crystal Island improvements. We already have the funding with stormwater. It was listed as existing. And the projection year on that was 2019. So that was the conception that everyone was getting, thinking that we're going to get our roads done in 2019. That amount was $4,200,000.
Yeah, and I've talked to the city manager about this. That was a plug number. There really was no revenue backing to support that number. And I think they threw that number out there thinking down the road, they could get some additional financing to do that, but I don't think that was a very serious number, and I don't think it was realistic.
So you're saying that number was listed and there was nothing there?
I don't think.
They just put the number down?
I don't, when the research that I did on that, there wasn't a whole lot of detail that supported that number. I don't know how they arrived at that number, and looking at it now, it seems like it was understated.
Maybe I can interject. We had originally done the budget and listed all the projects back in 2013, 2014. So that number for Crystal was a carryover. At the time, it was decided to Normandy first. It was one of the roads, basically it was balanced between Boca Seega and Normandy. You know, they were both in the same condition. So we did Normandy, and then we went after cooperative funding to go after dollars for Rex and then for Boca Seega and 137th. So we had not done an update of the rate study or an update of what it would cost to do Crystal and or an update of what it would cost to do Crystal and the rest of that Crystal Island. So, those numbers that you see there are about six or seven years old. And the cost of construction has gone up about 10 to 15% a year.
And Commissioner, if I may speak to that, in my conversations with the Finance Director, one of the things, when I joined the organization, I asked him that $4.2 million, had we set aside any revenue or funding stream or had we already gone out for a bank note or a bond issuance for that? And the answer to that, it was no, the number was merely a plug number because our CIP, in the way the document is, it only requires us to fund the first year in the CIP even though it's a five-year plan. So, when we looked at the budget number, the Director and I said, the only way conceivably that we would be able to see this project come to life is we'd have to push it back and understand that it takes six to eight months for the city to compile all the data and all the information, all the paperwork to effectively go out for a bond issuance or a bank note. So, that's why you see the $4.2 million broken into different tranches to where it was a $2 million, I think, out in 2021 or 2022 because we anticipated that this year we would go to address Parsley and Marguerite, and then as part of that, we would look to see, to get a bigger bond issuance or bank note to address the issues on Crystal Island. So, now what we've done is we've taken all the projects, and to Director Pierce's credit, we've actually had a discussion with our lending institution, and they certainly believe that now is the time for us, if we are going to proceed forward with issuing debt for the purposes of our roadways, to do it now. They believe that interest rates are going to go up, they are not going to go down, and there is some concerns with respect to the economy backsliding as well. So, we are positioned in a time where immediacy is certainly very important, hence why you've seen Pelican Lane, John's Pass Village, certain other capital projects added into this because we think that there's some benefits, economies to scale that we can benefit from if we were to move forward sooner rather than later. But to the point that the Director was addressing, that $4.2 number, there was no financial data or documentation that backs up how that number was derived.
Well, that kind of brings me back around to the fiscal year 2019 where they showed the Crystal Island improvements, and again, through stormwater, existing is the status on it. And they're showing the projection date of 2022 at $2 million. So, that just, the number is just put in?
When we did the CIP for the 2019 budget, that was more realistic, what you see there. When we broke that up and tried to fit it in, but again, we were delaying the project.
Why were we delaying it? Because see, originally, we had a five-year program. There was five areas of town that was going to be taken care of. There was Normandy, then there was the Rex Place, there was Bogasiaga, and I think Marguerite and Parsley was on there, Crystal was the last one on the list. And after each one of those, they had the amount of what it was going to cost for that project.
I think between when we did the CIP for the 2019 budget and now, some things have changed. We've seen the emergence, the immediacy of doing this project quickly rather than delaying it. So, I think a lot has changed since we did that CIP.
Well, I understand that. Like I said, we had three projects done and completed and taken care of, they were paid for. There was only two left on the list to do. Why was the project stopped?
Commissioner, if I may, to the Department Director's point, I think those projects that you communicated, there was funding that had already been acquired. There had not been any funding that had been acquired for the Crystal Island project. So, that's why we're here where we are today, is those projects, cooperative money had been set aside from SWIFT MUD. So, obviously, if it takes us, for all intent and purpose, a 24-month period to get money from the district, those projects that occurred, Rex Place, Bogasiaga, and 137th Avenue, probably well, two years prior, had already obtained the funding necessary for the project. So, when it got down to the Crystal Island project, there had been no, in essence, legwork to substantiate that $4.2 million claim because that's when I asked the finance director, "Okay, so how are we going to go ahead and pay for this? Did we go out for a bond issuance or a bank note?" No, the money hasn't been acquired, so that's why we're going through this process now to acquire the money for all these projects so we can go out and go through the cooperative funding process with the Water Management Districts. But those other projects, you know, Mr. Carrier, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they probably were started well back in 2014, 15, yeah.
The other thing I might add too is the way, not a budget person, but the way the budget was set up, they got just enough money to do those four projects or three cooperative projects. So, we couldn't start one without getting the reimbursement from SWIFT MUD to start the other. So, there was a little bit of a delay. We tried to knock those out like every year, but it ended up being like 18 months or so, and the end projects ended up costing us about 15% more, as you saw with 137th Avenue Circle. So, again, we couldn't start the next project, and we finished the first one because we had to get all the reimbursement back from SWIFT MUD so we'd have the funds to go ahead and start the next one and keep the projects moving. And that got a little bit delayed.
And the delay getting the money from SWIFT MUD and the county is always like a two, at least a two, three month delay in getting that money, getting that reimbursement.
What are the odds of getting that reimbursement?
I think pretty good. The pervious pavement and the baffle boxes, in SWIFT MUD's eyes, is a home run. So, if you allow us to move forward, Mr. Evans and I, the first thing we'll do within the next week or two is reach out to SWIFT MUD, start talking to those folks, and do some preliminary engineering to make sure that what we want to do is going to work. And we'll report back to you to make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Okay. And if we go forward in the future with a loan or bond insurance, how will that affect our budget and will it affect our millage rate going forward?
As the city manager pointed out, I've already been in contact with one big bank that we have a relationship with, and they're kind of indicating that the interest rates are low. They're good, but there's some question marks on the horizon as far as recession. So, if this is a good time to commit to a financing option to analysts and start planning for it, you know, as opposed to, or waiting for, you know, the interest rate to start going up or possible reception, which would make things a little bit more difficult.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, your two revenue streams that you would be looking at to effectively pay for the bank note or bond issuance would be your stormwater assessment. And in conversations that I've had with Director Pierce, we're talking about bringing forward the resolution that the board adopted that effectively took that 50% or 50 cent increase on the parking where you set aside 25 cents for infrastructure and 25 cents to pay down the debt. If you were to effectively change that resolution and utilize that money, that 50 cents, you can pledge that revenue stream towards the debt issuance, and that's a tune of about $400,000. So, with that, and then looking at your stormwater assessment, you conceivably can be able to have the debt service payment just by modifying the resolution that the board did pass. So, there is the funding that's available to be able to move forward with the project to where you're not even looking at your millage rate as a option to utilize to fund the capital infrastructure investments.
And to that point, the debt that we already have, the four other debt issues for stormwater, this building, the utilities, and the fire truck, the average interest on that debt is probably right around 2%, 2%, 2.5%. So, that's at a lower, lower interest rate than the interest rates that we're looking at now, which are around 3%, 3.5%, 3.5%. So, it doesn't make any sense to take that 50 cents additional revenue and pay down that lower interest rate debt but to pay the future debt, which would be at a higher rate than the previous debt that we have.
And to that point, what we're asking for the board is obviously, we would like to move forward with bringing you a funding package that addresses all the roadway infrastructure that we articulated in this memorandum, but we also have the options that have been communicated about receiving monies from the district. So, if we believe Crystal Island, for all intent and purpose, is going to be an $8 million project, and we receive $4 million from the Water Management District, you know, that reduces the monies that you would have to pay back in a debt issuance, and then the board at that time can then say, "You know what? Let's turn that back to the bank or let's look at some of the other roadway projects that we have in our community." Because in my conversations with Mr. Carrier since 2014 to now, we've seen capital construction costs specific to roadways go up anywhere between, you know, 15 to 35%. And so, moving forward with some of these projects sooner rather than later is a huge benefit for us, but there is some opportunities that we may bring you a proposal that looks at $15 million, but when it's all said and done, it may be substantially less than what you're seeing here this evening. So, this will be the worst-case scenario, and we will go back and sharpen our pencils and get us to where we're comfortable. But all this will end up coming back to you in many forms and fashions. So, the only thing that we are really asking for is authorization to proceed forward with going out to bid for the milling and resurfacing of Crystal Drive and Flamingo, going through a competitive process with the Water Management District to see if there's some cooperative funding available, bringing back to you some funding options to address some of these roadway projects that we have. And in the event, worst-case scenario, that we're unsuccessful in obtaining any grant funding, you would have the cash on hand to be able to address the issue. So, either way, the project is going to get completed because we did not want to have a situation whereby the residents are anticipating something being done and then we're held up because we were hoping that a granting agency or the Water Management District would fill in the gap. So, this is, in essence, the worst-case scenario that we would see.
Jonathan, I don't know if you can give me the information I'm going to ask for, but SWIFT MUD, when you apply for a grant with them, they normally pay for half of the project? Is that normal?
I'll have Mr. Carrier kind of talk about the cooperative funding.
So, typically, SWIFT MUD will pay for half of the stormwater aspects of the project. Since we will be putting in pervious pavement, they'll include the curbs because the curbs hold that infrastructure and holds that pervious concrete and the granite subbase and the filter that's underneath it. So, they'll pay for all of that. Because we're putting in new curbs, we're going to affect the driveways. So, typically, SWIFT MUD will pay for that also. What they won't pay for is new water distribution pipes and relining of the sanitary sewer. But we don't have to worry about that because that's Pinellas County's infrastructure, and they're responsible for that. So, the key is, we have this pervious pavement system. We want to make sure that we have the infrastructure underneath it all brand-new. So, that's why we need to start reaching out to Pinellas County on the front end here so that all that, when we're done, it's a brand-new road and brand-new infrastructure for all those roads that we touch.
Some of the people that I spoke with, again, would say, "Why are we paying twice for the road? Because they're going to tear up Crystal Island in, what, two years maybe? Once they..."
Two and a half, three, yes.
Two and a half, okay, they'll be tearing it up, so you're paying $250,000 for that right now. Then you're going to turn around in two years and tear it up, and we're going to start all over again. And they ask, you know, "Why don't we just do the roads right the first time? And get them done right the first time?"
We could, if you granted us the money, we could go out there and pay full price and redo the entire road. I think it's a better option for the city to go after the cooperative funding. It's estimated about $2.5 million. You could pay that now, or you can wait a couple of years and get half of that back, get $1.3, $1.2 million back from SWIFT MUD and do it right. It's, in my opinion, I think the road needs to be resurfaced just because of the amount of traffic that's on it and the condition that it's in now. It's on the verge of having some severe potholes, the alligator cracking, the asphalt's starting to split. That's all going to start going if we go through another rainy season. That water, the rainwater runs over that asphalt and cars drive over it, and you get this hydraulic, it's called hydraulic pumping, and it starts to wash out everything that's underneath the roadway. I think it's a critical time that we go out there and resurface that roadway at this point just to try and save it so we can get another three or four years out of it. Now, keep in mind, when we resurface it, we're not going to be doing anything to the curbs. The curbs that are still settled and holding dirt and mud, they're still going to be like that. It's just to preserve the travel lane of the roadway.
Thanks, Al. Don't mean to be oppressed on this, but I had a lot of questions, sorry.
I think we'll open the floor for comments on this particular agenda item. Go ahead.
Good evening again. My name's Chuck Lambert. I still live at 565 Crystal Drive on Crystal Island. Well, I think at this point in time, there should be no question, the roads on Crystal Island need work. Started this several months ago, I think we had some convincing to do, but I think we're all on the same page here tonight. They need work, they need it now. Two things I know for sure. One, Domino's Pizza is not going to fill our potholes. Two, Mexico is not going to build our road. It's up to us here tonight. Presently, nothing's budgeted for the roadwork on Crystal Island until 2022. In conclusion, we don't need any more false promises, we've had those for the last six or seven years. No action is not suitable. I am requesting action now to, first, Crystal Drive is the worst and should be completely milled and resurfaced along with Flamingo, as Jonathan alluded to. The remaining roads on the island need potholes filled, there's crumbling asphalt, needs to be replaced and dips in there. There's also pooling of water, that needs to be probably addressed immediately as well. Second, a more comprehensive approach needs to be looked at for a complete reconstruction of our roads on Crystal Island, including sewers and water, as well as the funding needs to be investigated for this. We don't wish to fight the city over our roads. Actually, it was the only place I've ever lived where I had to fight for the road. It was always just done, and I guess I never appreciated that before. We want to work with the city to expedite this process. We had a meeting here on February 13th this year. This meeting had several commissioners present, the mayor was here, city manager, about 50 people in attendance. We all voiced our concerns about the roads, and the message was clear, Crystal Island roads need immediate attention now. I support Jonathan Evans' memorandum that he just went through dated February 18th and his recommendations. We expect the city to do the right thing. Thank you.
My name is Mark McLaren. Been a resident owner on Lillian, 535 Lillian, for the last 25 years. Some of the history on Crystal, I know going back 15 years ago, there was a lot of repairs and the bad repair that we're all aware of on the north side of that road. I compliment everybody in the cooperation that I'm hearing about the temporary repairs. I think the temporary repairs are definitely needed. I have a 45-year experience in large construction, however, and I've had two major failures with pervious paving. And it kind of seems to me that this is one of the loose items that we have not been discussing specifically. Pervious paving is one of those things in construction that is one of the golden gooses. You get the benefit of water going through the paving magically and no ponding, no retention ponds, you get credits from SWIFT MUD. As an owner down on Lillian, I know that if you dig in your backyard, we are a dredging area, and our soils, after you get through... area, and our soils, after you get through the six inches of topsoil that we brought in, is a morl. You have to use a pickaxe to go through it. Until it gets saturated, then it becomes muck. I know that on other pervious projects that I've been on, SWIFMUD has had us put underdrain in. And if we had to do an underdrain under this magical pervious paving, this could be a tremendous project. It might not even be approved by SWIFMUD. I just encourage us, before we start thinking we have the, the magic goose out here with pervious paving, that we make sure we know what we're talking about. One of the projects that I encourage everybody to go to is Walsingham Shopping Center pervious paving. One of the biggest failures, pervious paving looks like, I, I think everybody realizes what Rice Krispies crunchies are, when you take Rice Krispies and you make them into a, a candy bar and it kind of crunches, and it, it's, that's what pervious paving looks like. And it does not hold up to heavy traffic, turning radiuses especially. And the worst thing about it is if you have to cut a section up to repair what's underneath it, you can't repair it with asphalt, you can't repair it with concrete, you have to repair it with another pervious paving, and it looks like crap. Thank you.
Steve Kočić, one-five-three-oh-one, Second Street East, Madera Beach. First thing I'd like to say is that Nancy, thank you very much. John, don't ever go into somebody else's district again. That's so unethical, to speak with, you know, the city manager and say, I think you should talk to Nancy. My, you know, I've heard some things from people. That's the way a teamwork works. You don't go behind somebody's back because it's election year. And that's what this is. This is an election-year project. We've got two weeks to go before an election, and all of a sudden, everything's going to be fixed in two weeks. Where were you for two years? Because this was under, this was, Shane Crawford had a whole plan that was laid out, the same as Jonathan is doing now. It was all in set. SWIFMUD had already been in the loop for a couple of past projects, so they were ready to get this rolling for the next one coming up. But because of this board failure to continue with the projects instead of firing everybody, and now you had to spend time getting it, now we lost the, the continuity of SWIFMUD, which would have been good. Now we're adding another fifteen percent a year on top of the project, which puts another two million dollars onto the project. So how does the hero come out of here walking and getting your back slapped? Somebody should smack you in the face when you get out of here by saying, why'd you cost us so much money? For Christ's sakes, when you had the chance to do the continuity, you forgot about it because you had debts to pay to people who elected you. You had to fire people. You had to make the city in turmoil. That was the goal first. Now, all of a sudden, you're coming as a savior? That's not the way we do things in Madera Beach. If we worked together and we realized that the professionals, whoever's sitting in these chairs, are able to accomplish the goals, we would already be rolling down with Crystal. He would have a staging area all set, and he'd be ready to do the project and all. Now we're back to square one, and we lost two years, and at fifteen percent a year, that's a little over a couple of hundred thousand a year. So two more million dollars we threw onto the project. And plus, SWIFMUD now says, eh, I don't even know whether I want to work with you guys, because every two years, you go and stop your projects, and meanwhile, we have these things planned for you, and then you go and throw it away. It's about time that this city realizes that we need people up here who work together and are thinking about the city and not thinking about the people who elected them. Thank you.
Let me start by saying, Commissioner Doother, Doother, we really appreciate the action you've taken. We've waited six years at least to try to get something done. And why did we go to John? We went to him because we saw in 2013, we had four million dollars in a budget for Crystal Drive. And we thought, great, we're going to get something done. But what happened? We got no representation. The commission allowed that money to slip on to 2022. So naturally, we got pretty fed up with what was going on, and that we were getting little representation. So we went to somebody that could do us some good, and certainly John did. He got right away with the city manager, he took some action, and that could have been done by our own commissioner, but it wasn't. So we saw too much inaction in Crystal Island and Crystal Drive. So that's the route we took, and I'm not ashamed of it. And I really appreciate the action that Commissioner Doother took, and we appreciate it. Another comment I'd like to make is that, if you're in the audience, it sounds like Crystal Drive is getting something special. I've been on Crystal Drive for forty-two years. The la, the, Crystal Drive was resurfaced in eight, nineteen eighty-seven, thirty-two years ago. We've actually had, we've been ignored. There's been nothing done on Crystal Island. Apparently, we haven't had the proper representation. We've sat there and watched our roads deteriorate continuously. We, once in a while, we were throwing a bone where it looked like something was put in the, in the budget, but that money just slipped away to other areas, to other districts. So sure, we've taken some action to try to get something done, and it's not because of the election, it's because we've been ignored year after year after year. Thirty-two years, nothing done in Crystal Island. So we aren't being any, given any special treatment at all. And I really appreciate the action that Mr. Evans has done to get this thing off dead center, and I appreciate the commission. Hopefully, you can do something. Hopefully, we don't get one of the commissioners suggesting we move this thing on for another few years. Thank you very much.
I live on Lillian Drive. I moved down here seven years ago-
Excuse me, could you state your name, please?
I'm Chuck Dillon. Live on Lillian Drive, moved down here seven years ago from St. Louis area. I worked on roads and construction, and I agree definitely with the last gentleman, permeable pavement is not for Florida. People who are talking about flooding and things, we have water, we have high tides. There's no way of keeping the water off the roads or off our roads, off the roads or off our streets. Also, I'm very confused here. I heard something that, that Crystal Island is a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar project, but yet SWIP is going to pay for the curbs, and somebody else is going to be paying for the water runoff, but yet there's a mill and overlay for the one street that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That's, a, as somebody else said, it's kind of a waste of money. Why mill it? It hasn't been touched for thirty-two years? Overlay it. If it's only going to have to be there for two, three years, overlay it. Put a Band-Aid on it. Why take out what's good? And if the street's been there for thirty-two years, why go through a complete redo? These streets have been here for how long? They're not in that bad a shape underneath. They're bad on the top, and I don't know what your expertises are for roadways and everything, but it's there. Why remove and tear out? And once again, seven-and-a-half million dollars, but yet Crystal I, Crystal Drive was four million, but now we're going to put a Band-Aid on it for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? I don't see where the numbers come in. And I was in construction. I did road building and everything. I don't know why numbers can't come better. You know, as to whether or not it was so inefficient or so expensive down here, I just don't see it. And I would love to give my time at this point, some point forward, to give my expertise, as well as I'm sure the gentleman, which is my neighbor, about permeable pavement. It's nothing that's really good. Also, with permeable pavement, you are supposed to have a construction or a suction vacuum truck to keep the permeable clean. If sand and stuff gets in it, it doesn't work. So you're clogging it up, and we are on a sand area. So, thank you.
I, Guy Crutelli, one-three-zero-two-five, Pelican Lane. Just like I said, pervious, pervious concrete, I've worked in pervious concrete for over fifty years in concrete business. I know what a concrete dose of pervious, once you've got two, three years of life, like Indian Rocks, we did all the roadway on Indian Rocks. Largo, we did a two-shopping center. Tampa, we did a five-shopping center. None of them worked the first two, three years. Once the sand again there, the flower from the tree, the sap from the tree, and that's it. So you got blacktop or solid concrete. It looks nice the first couple of years, three years, but it don't, not going to do anything for our road. Loca Boca Sierra, we haven't had a machine go over to pull the sand. It's already, go tomorrow, the rain, see if it goes into the road. It's going to wash it to the curb. They're a brand-new one we did now. Do we have a, a price for pervious, and we have a price for regular blacktop? Do they, do they, do they balance the two price, what, it's going to cost one price to another price? At least then, they can vote on it, you guys can vote on it? If you vote on pervious concrete, I'm against it. I was against on the frosty one, and nobody listened to me. But I work in concrete. You go and see Indian Rocks Beach and those roadway, there is nothing that's going to go inside for that, those pervious concrete, nothing. I mean, there's official, the steel worker there, they know Mr. C. So you can ask them, there's nothing, no water will penetrate through the concrete anymore because it's sand. It will, it, it, you know, the mildew, the night mildew and all that, it, it fills the holes. And the cost is twice the money that we pay for regular blacktop. So I thank our engineering and all the staff, the, the commissioner, mayor, Ms. Mayor and the city manager. Tonight, you guys, you're going to decide on something, make sure that you have the two price together, and let's get the project done. I'd love to have it, Williams Avenue, there used to be, and now it's Pelican Lane. It's forty years I haven't seen nothing done. I hope that something gets done too there. Thank you very much.
Sorry my, sorry my husband can't be here. We're both civil engineers. I'm an attorney and an LLM, so kind of know a little bit about this kind of stuff.
Can you state your name and, your address?
And Wattpaw, five-seven-six, Crystal Drive.
Thank you.
I want to say just three things. In 2014, we were looking for a house here. We came from California, and our realtor was telling us, we don't want to live in Madera Beach because the roads are crappy and you really want to be in Rennington Shores or that kind of area. That continues to be what we hear from realtors all the time. The road needs to be done. We were concerned enough because we loved it here. We loved some neighbors that we had met here, still love them. And we went down and met with Mr. Crawford, and we went through the budget, and he showed us the four million dollars and said, this is going to happen in 2014. We spent over an hour and a half with him. Every year, we went down, had the same meeting, and the same promise was made. Nothing was done. That's the problem we have. We need to rebuild trust with the residents all around Madera Beach, that when we make the effort to go down and we get a promise, that that promise is either kept or there is really strong evidence of why it can't be kept. Thirdly, I'd like to say, for Crystal Drive, we live on the long-end cul-de-sac. I highly think that, I wish you guys, if you're looking at redoing Crystal Drive, that you redo around there too. Because what happens is every UPS truck, every FedEx truck, every C-Wall person, every coal contractor, every gardener, everybody who has a truck comes and turns around at the end of our street, and it is destroying the street. They can't turn around on Crystal Drive, so they drive all the way around, and they go around the cul-de-sac and go back. And we see, it's probably, I'm not exaggerating, since I work out of the house now, there's probably sixty a day that go around that cul-de-sac. And it is destroying with the trailers. You know, if you know anything about axles and stuff, it's blah, 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 and they're really wrecking the road down on that side. So I highly recommend that if you're looking at doing Crystal Drive, which I hope you do, that you look at that end too, not to take away from the other end, but they don't turn around there. They come this way and then turn around. Huh? Well, they, they do, but not probably as much as they do on our side. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, Ginger Tolliver, Bay Point Drive. I have to say something. I thought if I sat here long enough, I'd see what I saw before. Strange, but we see people up there knocking each other. Strange that it's election time, excuse me. But I, I want to say that you guys, we, we are a city. We have to think of it. And we're, we're knocking former city managers, we're doing all this stuff, and I will tell you one thing. We had, I don't know whether it was state or federal funding, to underground the utilities on Gulf Boulevard. And this board, or the people sitting up there now, let it, let it drop. And it went back to the city or the state, I don't know who it was. The only person I know was here then was Nancy. I know Nancy was here. And so if you get this funding, what's to say you won't let it drop? Stupid. I'm sorry, I've been here too long, I guess, but it's funny that these things always come up at election time.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Last call. Public comment is now closed.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may address some of the remarks that were made concerning the project. As we go through the exploratory phase of this project, Mr. Carrier and staff are going to explore all different options to be able to determine what's the most suitable and most appropriate type of technology that would be deployed to address what the concerns are. With the Boca Sierra project, you can see that a portion of the roadway is that pervious pavement, and then a portion of it is your traditional asphalt. That was determined because of the topography and the concerns with regards to the water actually coming up through the pervious pavement. So there's a lot of engineering and a lot of exploratory work that would have to occur. We believe that pervious pavement is a benefit to the city, but we're not going to put something in there just for the sake of trying to obtain money from the water management district. If it doesn't work, we're not going to put something in place that we look back three or four years down the road and we ask ourselves, why did we consider that? So that is all part of the process that we will undertake as staff and ultimately bring back to the board to consider. We do have a street sweeper that can be able to accommodate the necessary maintenance, preventative maintenance, that is required to be able to maintain pervious pavement. So that's something that we do have. We have just hired a individual that has a CDL license, so people have probably seen the street sweeper throughout the community. So those are some things that we are going to, to ensure that folks are informed and educated about. But this is not moving forward with the entire project today. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of discussions, and there's a lot of conversations that will come before the board for consideration. And to the speaker's points with respect to the cul-de-sacs, that's something that Mr. Carrier and I can definitely look at, including in part of the overall scope of the project, if that is, in fact, the easiest way for the delivery trucks to turn around. We want to make sure that we address the, the concerns that the residents have and move forward with a- forward with a, with a project that works. Also, it was mentioned about the undergrounding utilities. That project is money that is from Penny for Pinellas. The city does have that money. We are working with Duke Energy, who it is their responsibility to effectively move forward with the project. We are working with FDOT, which is their roadway, so we have to comply with whatever requirements. You've probably seen the Frontier trucks. The Frontier trucks were not informed that the state, the city of Madeira Beach, and Duke Energy were moving forward with a undergrounding project because the contractors were not informed. So there's about three weeks' worth of work for them to remove some of the conduit that they have in place. So we are still moving forward with the undergrounding of the utilities. The money is there. We have to work with the state. We have to work with a for-profit company that is based out of North Carolina. When the storms hit North Carolina, they deployed a lot of resources. And in the grand scheme of things, our stretch of undergrounding utilities is not a major priority for them as it's only a $1.4 million project. So we as staff have been pushing on that as much as possible and we will be putting out some additional information on that. But I did wanna just clarify for the record that this is not something that the project is already designed. There's a lot of work on the staff's side that policymakers are gonna have to make decisions on. And when you look at the numbers to determine pervious pavement versus your traditional asphalt, and then obviously if we don't go that route with pervious pavement, then we don't receive money from the district, but the cost for the project does go down. But those are all things that we wanna look at. But the treating of the water on our roadways is very important because you are going to see stricter regulations come down from Tallahassee, especially considering the actions that the governor has taken with respect to the replacement on the board at Swift Mud. So water quality for stormwater is gonna be a major issue that you could probably see in the rulemaking process, that some things are going to change. And they're going to want to see cities and counties be more aggressive in treating stormwater runoff.
Do we have any more discussion from the board?
No, I'd like just to make a motion that we move forward with the road rate project funding and auxiliary road projects, requested to acquire the estimated $15 million in infrastructure funding. But I would also like to add that we get, I don't wanna say this, from our, you know, difference between cement versus the pervious and the pros and cons of both and which way we should go. So if we could add that to this, I would appreciate that.
Certainly.
I know there's gonna be a lot of people out there that are gonna be very upset over the fact that the road's being paid for twice. And I can understand that. I live on Crystal and my road's not that great neither. And I plan on living there forever. I've been there since ninety-three. But I just want people to understand that we're doing the best we can and it's hard to please everybody. It really is. So I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Next item on the agenda is the purchase of sanitation trucks and containers. City manager?
All right. Madam Mayor and members of the Board of Commissioners, this item is to seek authorization to proceed forward with the purchase of a sanitation truck off of the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, which is competitively bid. In my conversations with the sanitation supervisor, the city of Madeira Beach is in desperate need for a new sanitation truck as it is at the end of its useful life. The total cost for the truck is approximately $239,613. And then we are asking for additional $27,000 to purchase iron, iron containers. The city just purchased iron containers probably less than thirty days ago, but those containers have been distributed to the public. In my conversations with the sanitation supervisor, he believes that it is important to have these in stock so we can be able to better fulfill our customers' needs. At this time, staff recommends approval of a total of $267,000 that would be utilized from the city's enterprise fund. The finance director has reviewed the manager's request and ensures that there is appropriate funding available to fund the expenditure requests that staff is asking for. And at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions the board may have.
The only question I have is, why is, why is it a surprise? Why didn't we know ahead of time? I mean, we've been talking about trucks and cars and...
The, the sanitation truck is something that we couldn't get through our enterprise lease agreement. And since I've been meeting with the management staff over at Public Works and having that discussion with the sanitation supervisor, he has communicated to me the series of repairs that have had to happen to a certain vehicle in the fleet. And we believe that if we move forward with surplusing that vehicle and getting out of a fleet, it addresses some of the public safety concerns because they are, in essence, there's not adequate space in the cab of the vehicle. It is unreliable and it is something that we are in desperate need of. And if we postpone it, there's some concerns about the downtime if that vehicle is inoperable, especially going into our peak season. It does take some time, but we're continuous, we're spending more money than we would like to keep that vehicle in operations. And we don't wanna get to a situation where the board sees something that it's forty or fifty thousand dollars to continue to keep a older piece of equipment in stock versus looking to purchase a newer piece of equipment. So in my direct conversation with staff, I've been able to get more real-time information and that was what was communicated to me.
And that vehicle that it's replacing has been fully depreciated?
Yeah.
What, what do we spend on old maintenance on that vehicle? Do we have any dollar figures at all?
I, I do not have the dollar figures on hand, but I can certainly send that to the board via email. But it is a substantial amount of money that has been, it, it's, it's unreliable to the point where staff is very concerned when they do go to, to grab that piece of equipment for providing sanitation services. But I can get that information and get it to you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Floor is open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more discussion from the board?
No, I just think if it's, if it's truly breaking down a lot and costing us money there and it's a safety hazard, the only thing I didn't see in here, like I said, was the costs for maintenance on it. I'd like to make a motion to, to purchase of sanitation trucks and containers.
Second.
Would like to see those numbers on the maintenance.
I'll send it to you, Commissioner.
Any more discussion? Will city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is authorization to purchase a backup generator for city hall. City manager?
Madam Mayor and members of the Board of Commissioners, this item is to seek authorization for staff to proceed forward with the acquisition and installation of a 400 KW3-phase generator. During the time, prior to my arrival, city staff communicated to me that the generator that currently resides at the municipal fire station is not hooked up to city hall, nor can it provide the power, the, the power necessary to power this particular facility. So staff is requesting authorization to proceed forward with acquiring a diesel generator that will be installed over base flood elevation on the existing concrete pad at the fire department. There will be some directional boring that will occur and some wiring that will happen here at city hall to effectively be able to power the municipal fire station as well as city hall. We believe that this is a more effective and efficient way for us to provide disaster response and it can also serve as a place for post-event shelters if necessary. Also, the existing generator, we believe that it's fiscally prudent for us to look to relocate the existing generator at the fire department and run a gas line and then have a transfer switch put on the recreation center. So in essence, we can be able to power up that facility where we would actually be able to sustain city operations on backup power in the event of a post-incident activation. We can utilize it as an area to feed the public, an area to house staff as we move forward with a, a recovery. In addition to, there's opportunities for funding to come from FEMA and other entities to help offset the cost. We anticipate that the cost for the generator is approximately $150,000 and about another $125,000 for the installation. Staff would like to consider the possibility of us acquiring the generator and then competitively bidding out the installation, which we anticipate can save the city between 15,000 to 25,000 dollars. In this memorandum, we've also included the $60,000 to be able to retrofit the recreation center so they can be backup power at that particular facility. Right now, the city would look to fund this particular expenditure request from the city's emergency storm response fund that possesses, possesses an unrestricted fund balance of well over 2.2 million dollars. Right now, we have approximately, if I'm not mistaken, and Director Pierce can correct me if I'm wrong, about $400,000 that is remaining from reimbursements from FEMA that we would put into that account when that's received. We also are pretty confident that we can get about 50% of the money the city expends for a backup generator if we are to move forward with such a purchase. This will be something that will be a huge asset in our emergency preparedness and our disaster response and effectively allow for us to maintain the continuity of government and services in the events of a post, or pre or post-event activation. And at this time, staff is prepared to answer any questions and I believe Chief O'Neill is here to address it from an emergency management perspective as well.
I have one question. How long would it take for the purchase and installation? Will we have it done by hurricane season?
Our hope is to have it done by hurricane season. Once we, if, if we're able to obtain the, the approval from the board, conceivably, it will be probably cutting it pretty close to when hurricane season starts and when we do get the generator and the installation of all that. But we're gonna try to make sure that we move in a space that allows for us to get this all in place prior to June 1.
Okay, 'cause I, you know, what the city went through last time without the power, I think this definitely needs to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna try to move as, as quickly as possible. And we do believe if we're the entity that purchases the generator through a direct purchase, we'll, we'll save 15,000 to 25,000 on that. But we, we are going to, to look to move as quickly as we possibly can to, to effectively hook up both facilities to accommodate the, the residents and the staff in the event of an emergency activation.
Well, personally, I think it's a great idea. We've needed one for some time and to have the recreation, recreation center open, you know, in an emergency, I think would be a really great, great idea. I'll open, a floor open for public comment.
Steve Kopec, 15301, Second Street East, Madeira Beach. I wasn't here for the, for the last hurricane, but I believe we were out of power for five days. Is that about correct? I know my building was without power for five days and we had the generator come in.
It was about two weeks from what I believe. We were out of the firehouse for two weeks. Hurricane Irma.
All right. Two weeks and you were operating out of the firehouse. They have the generator there. If we have a catastrophic storm, for one, I, I think it was totally insane that the chief would stay during a hurricane and sacrifice the men and that apparatus to stay at a place where a storm surge could come through, telephone pole comes through, the doors, boom, everybody's gone. Don't ever leave your equipment and your men in an area that, that is gonna be seriously possibly damaged. I have some training in this type of disaster preparedness. We used to have, we used to have it over at the bank on, on Seminole Boulevard. That was where it was. All we need is a couple of phones, the, the fire department can be your secondary base while the, waiting for the recovery. In a really bad hurricane, everybody's gonna be off here, nobody's coming back. You're not coming back, you're not coming back because you're not gonna get over the bridge until everything is secured and cleared. Nobody's coming back until they're ready to let some people come back in. And then when you come back in, a temporary base would be there. To have, to, to spend this much money on, on something that I doubt you're ever gonna use, and if necessary, you could, you could contract with somebody to have a generator delivered as soon as the roads were open, the bridges opened, and have a temporary generator where you could have a place where it's plugged in and you have the electrical part done, that's fine, nothing wrong with that. But spend all this money on a generator that has never been needed in fifty years? And now you're saying, all of a sudden, because one time, there was a couple of days where we went out of power, and we still don't know why Duke Energy took so long to put the power back. That was what really was surprising. We've never gone that long without power. I think this is really a serious waste of money. And once again, something happens and everybody runs around like a chicken without a head. Think about it seriously. It's a lot of money which could be used for the roads, used for other things which are a lot more important than this. And we do have backup power with the fire department. Can have a couple of phones in there, can operate out of there, wouldn't be a problem. There's not gonna be anything that, that you're going to really be able to do until really everything gets up and running and, and gets smoothie. We're the last end of the, of, of the decision-making and stuff. To put this in, it, it seems to me really is a big waste of money. And I remember when you first had this, when it happened, you came back and right away it was, we gotta get a generator, we gotta get a generator. Oh, all these years we've gone through and we haven't had a generator. And like I say, if it's really serious and the storm surge is there, you're not gonna, the generator's gonna be floating along with the fire truck.
Hey, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, just to expand on what the city manager indicated, from a financial standpoint, of the, of the 400,000-plus that we sought from FEMA as reimbursement, we only received about 19,000 from our own insurance company. But we have been in contact with other beach communities around the surrounding area and it looks like that the FEMA money coming in for reimbursement for Hurricane Irma is starting to come in. And so we're, we weren't as confident before, and I know I wasn't, but we are now confident that we are gonna probably see something before the, before September. And if we take this money out of the emergency stormwater fund, when we get that money, we will reimburse that fund on, on the amount of money that we do get.
Madam Mayor, just with regards to the emergency response fund, that fund has some restrictions. We're talking about the unrestricted fund balance that hasn't been earmarked for certain projects, but it is very limited on what you can utilize that money for. So we cannot reappropriate that money for the purposes of roadway infrastructure or expansions to the rec center. It is very restricted in what the uses could be. In addition to my conversations with the risk manager, it is almost guaranteed that in the event that you acquire a generator, that you receive a sizable return from them as you're making your community, community more resilient, to the point where I think grant recipients have received well over $200,000 in, in grant funds or repayment for making their communities more resilient. Because obviously, we don't have the luxury of continuously to wait for Duke Energy and Irma could have been a lot worse for a lot of other communities. So this is a way for us to address some of the concerns that were articulated, in addition to utilizing a funding stream, that the money is in essence sitting there and it's intended to be able to address some of the health, safety and welfare aspects of the services that we provide here in Madeira Beach.
Public comment, go ahead.
Sorry, guys. Guy Cretelli, 13025 Pelican Lane. I just come back from this and worry yesterday. I asked somebody why they install all those solar panels. Well, when they had the storm a few years ago, they generated ahead, they did not work all right because they used diesel fuel and gas. So they installed this big amount of panel, about 25 acre. Somebody should check into it. Maybe we should go to a solar panel and if we can get gas so... Maybe we should go to a solar panel, and if we can get gas or diesel to the tanks for this generator, just turn the screech. And we might even for City Hall, put a wire to it and have a light in City Hall. But I think if we go forwards solar energy versus a generator, it might be the best way to go, because everyone installs panels right now. Thank you.
Reece Tyner, 4996 Miramar. I have a question, and I hope it's not a stupid question. The generator that we're speaking of getting and putting over there, when you turn it on, what would it run? I mean, there's different sizes and, of course, the power that it puts out. I don't know all the correct terms to use for it, but what, would City Hall be operating just like nothing happened or just few things? I'm just curious, and some other people probably are too.
From my understanding, that most of the critical components, Madam Mayor, if I may, most of the critical components here at City Hall would be able to be up and operational. There are certain things that it effectively may not be able to, you know, power every element of the facility, but for the most part, it should be able to cure some of the concerns that staff had with respect to, you know, the lights, you know, the air condition, you know, those types of things. Powering up, getting our server and those types of things back up and running. So we believe that it is, you know, we've had conversations with our electrical contractor. They've assured us that everything that we are looking to be able to accomplish in the event that there is a loss of power, that both facilities here at City Hall, as well as the fire station, would be, would not see a significant diminishment in level of service in the event that we're on backup power, and you have the opportunity where it's going to be powered by gas and diesel fluid. So you have that. One of the other things I do want to bring to the board's attention, I have had the unfortunate luck to have to order meals for employees in the event of a disaster. And I can tell you, if it looks like a storm is moving in our direction, to try to acquire food or generators is very, very difficult, to the point where an 18-wheeler for MREs for us to get it from Tampa to the West Palm Beach area cost us just in freight, $18,000 not to account for the food, and it never showed up. So I do not want to place us in a situation of risk whereby we're looking to try to acquire a generator or things to be able to use our microwave or kitchens that we do have here and hope that we can get our hands on a generator. So this is allowing for us to make sure that we can, per, you know, all the emergency management training, that we are able to take care of ourself for well over, you know, a week's worth of time in the event that the federal government and other agencies had to come in and help us. But we just, from the staff's standpoint, building official, community development director, fire chief are all in unison with respect to our disaster and emergency management plan, that this is the most wise decision for us to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the public in case we had people's homes that are damaged, at least we have a place where they can have a warm meal, have a place to take a shower, those types of things, as we recover as a community.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from Chief O'Neil.
Chief?
I thought you would never ask. Mayor, Commissioners, always a pleasure to be here with you. I've listened to a lot of comments, and we are in agreement on what we need to power up this building. We spent numerous days in just deplorable conditions. The fire station was designed for a maximum of six people in there. We had all the city staff in there at one time. It was an absolute mess. So we do think that this is the way that we should proceed with this. We had actually requested generator backup power when this building was designed, and it was cut from the budget at that time. As far as evacuation of this area, let me assure you that your fire department will stay here until the very end. We are not going to abandon our post-of-duty or our citizens, and that's why we stayed during that last storm. We're fortunate. We have emergency generator power there at the fire station. We have a CAP-5 rated building that the city was kind enough to provide for us, and our firefighters will be here until the end. There's not a better place for us to evacuate to if we were going to leave. Probably someplace between 25% and 35% of our citizens will not leave during a storm. We know that. You ask your residents, "Are you leaving when a storm comes here?" They're not leaving town. And you know what? Your fire department's not going to leave town either. We're going to be here until the end. So that's our position, and that's what we'd like to see happen with this generator project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any more public comment? Did we finish public comment? I'm sorry. Any more discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of a backup generator for the City Hall.
Second. Any more discussion? City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Last item, excuse me, on the agenda is miscellaneous construction project funding requests.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation that we push this to our next workshop, since I don't have a lot of information on it and reading this over. I'm confused, to say the least, of everything that's in there. So that would be my recommendation or request.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if the board will indulge just to at least make the staff presentation, because I think Mr. Carrier can kind of communicate a little bit more specifics as it relates to this project, because some of these projects are in a situation where they are in desperate need of some attention. And per the city's purchasing authority, I don't have the ability to effectively address some of these issues. And if they continue down this path, I think there's some concerns that we may have associated with this. And so if the board would kindly indulge staff, we would like to at least make the presentation and maybe address those concerns.
Mayor, Commissioners, Al Carrier with the One Associates. The main focus of this agenda item is to take care of the Parsley Ave emergency stormwater project. It's the intersection between Parsley and Linway. There's an asphalt pipe, excuse me, there's an asphalt pipe, a stormwater asphalt pipe that goes between the Elks and that residence that sits right next to it. The stormwater pipe sits a little bit more on the private resident property. Last year, Public Works had gone out there several times. The pipe has holes in it, and it's taking dirt, it's taking topsoil every time it rains. This project was designed and bid out competitively. We only had one bidder bid on it, and the estimated price, engineer's estimated price was $180,000. The bid came in at over 200,000, or, excuse me, over $300,000. The city rejected the bid. It was just way out of whack. Steve's Excavating is now working on 137th Avenue Circle. They have agreed to hold their same prices that they're providing for 137th Avenue Circle to do the work on Parsley. So the main crux of this agenda item, again, is to fix that emergency asphalt pipe at Parsley. The other projects below that are some of the smaller projects that have just been kind of hanging out there for a while that the Public Works Department really doesn't have the means to get done. For instance, the ponds at Johns Pass Park, there's two ponds out there that are full of sand. Over time, because it rains and you get this accumulation of runoff from the parking lot, you get this biomass that grows, it gets nasty, or the water doesn't perk through the pond anymore. So one of the ancillary projects is to have Steve's Excavating go out there with their excavator while they're in the city and pull out some of that sand and recoup the two ponds that are out there. There's a small stormwater inlet behind Daughery Deck. It's probably a couple thousand dollars to fix. We've been working diligently with Pinellas County to find out what the cause of the loss of soil is around the stormpipe. There's a sanitary sewer lateral that comes through that area. We believe that's the culprit that's taking the dirt, is the storm, excuse me, the sanitary sewer. Once Pinellas County comes in and identifies that and fixes that line, we'll be able to have possibly Steve's come back in. Kenny from Public Works said if the timing's right, he could certainly go out there and recompact everything around the inlet and do it. But I just wanted to have that as a placeholder in case something happens where Public Works can't get out there, and we can get out there as soon as we can to fix that inlet. Another project we wanted to start looking into, it's been about six years since you guys had any stormwater barnacle cleaning. It was done six years ago. Lane Inliner had done every pipe in the city. We categorized every pipe. We took pictures of it, and we put it out for bid. Public Works is out there now identifying the pipes that are in need. Once we get that list together, we want to go ahead and put that out for bid so that we can continue cleaning the stormwater infrastructure. And then the last project on this list is Rex Place. When we redid Rex Place, we didn't reinstall the speed bumps. There's been an outcry from the residents to put the speed bumps back. We have a price of about $8,000 to reinstall, I believe it was three speed bumps, and that would come out of that portion of the funding for this agenda item.
Madam Mayor, if I may also add on to Mr. Carrier's remarks, is that a lot of these projects are routine maintenance in nature and are in situations whereby public works staff, working with Mr. Carrier, need to take some immediate actions, corrective actions. There is some funding that is already appropriated in the fiscal year 2019 budget to address a large portion of these projects. When we did go out for the competitive solicitation, it came back 70% higher. And so what we did is we rejected the bid. Then we reached out to Steve's Excavating to see if they would honor the pricing that was provided from the 137th Avenue Circle project. So there's some substantial savings associated with moving forward with these projects in that vein. In the event that we defer some of these projects, then my concern is that, that once Steve's Excavating is mobilized and they put out their work plan, having come back to them at a later point, you can see some of the costs increase or projects and initiatives that they may not be interested in because they're moving on to other projects. So we certainly believe that there is some things here that the city would benefit from tremendously, that we have routine maintenance and we have things that are in desperate need of repair and corrective measures. Specifically, the curb on 144th Avenue, we're seeing a lot of localized flooding in that area, and I've talked to that resident pretty frequently. And so has Mr. Carrier. We're trying to attempt to remedy that as part of these projects that you, that you're considering. The larger projects, obviously, would end up coming before you for authorization, but we'd like to move forward with these miscellaneous construction and repair projects.
I'll open the floor for public comment.
My name's Roger Pryor, 223 144th Avenue. If we do those drains, the cleanouts this time, I would like for whoever the contractor is or the city to notify all the residents beforehand, so we don't wonder who it is out there rattling around in our side yards. I just happen to have one next to me, and the last time I had people working, I didn't know who they were. If we just notify the people before we start to work, we'd all appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? There was close for public comment. Excuse me. So how do we want to go forward?
I'll make the motion. Do you need a motion on this or just?
If the board did want to proceed, we would certainly need legislative action. If you wanted to postpone it, then you also would need to take legislative action to do that as well. So we would need a motion, yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion then to proceed with the construction project authorization for the miscellaneous work throughout the city.
Have a second. City Attorney, was this the proper procedure?
You need a second for a motion. And under the charter, you need three votes for something to pass. We probably want to revisit the prior item, too. The city manager brought to my attention, there was a second on the prior motion, and you went to a vote, but the person who seconded voted against it. So that one did not pass.
So we should have a motion then to bring it back?
We'll do this one first. Right now, there's no, is there a second for this motion if not then entertain another motion?
Okay.
And the chairman, you can make motions or second. So the first motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion you should ask for?
Is there a motion?
I will second it in that we do not go over the 270,000 for all projects concerned, period. Not one penny over.
What was the number again? 200?
270 that they're showing here.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, from a budget standpoint, I mean...
If anything's different, well, I got to vote no then.
Well, from a budget standpoint, this would be tight, but I agree with the city manager and Al Carrier. The longer we wait to do some of these things, the cost is going to continue to go up, and that's what troubles me.
All right, any more discussion before we take roll call? City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
So are we staying with the max of 270?
270.
270, yeah. Okay. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
You're being no further business?
Madam Mayor, we did have that item. The city manager wanted to make sure that you are all aware. The item before about the emergency generator did not pass because the charter requires three votes, three affirmative votes. If that is your intent, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it's recorded as failing, or if the person who made the vote against it wants to reconsider, they can make a motion to reconsider, not that they have to. I'm just saying that's available. I wanted to make sure that you all understood the impact of your votes, because normally it would just be a majority, but because there's only three of you, and the charter says that three affirmative votes are necessary. That item about the emergency generator did not pass, so the public is not confused either. Even though it was two to one, it did not pass.
When that occurs, when any motion does not pass, can it be brought back to the board?
By a person who votes opposite.
Pardon?
It would have to be somebody on the prevailing side, so it would have to, Commissioner Hodges would have to be the one to bring it back up.
Thank you.
So you say bring it back up for another meeting or to vote on it again?
Whatever.
Do it right now if you like to.
At another meeting.
I'm not changing my vote still, no.
Okay, then there's no need. Thank you. So that item did not pass, and the clerk should announce that, Madam Clerk, when the votes come back two to one and three is required, if you could announce that the item did not pass, just so the public understands, so they don't get confused. Okay, thank you. You could adjourn the meeting now.
Madam Mayor, before you adjourn, on Monday's special meeting, I would like to have it strictly the three things. The board commission to interview select and qualifying applicant, the oath of office, and the roll call of a new commission, and take everything else off, since it is a special meeting for that purpose.
I believe we should do that as well. Do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We just need to take those things off.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:43.